Welcome to the Eugene City Council Work Session for April 22nd. I'd say this earlier, but I can hear that the mics are very expensive this evening, so you know. Okay, we have an important discussion coming up in our work session. It's on the multi-unit property tax exemption of MPT. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Denny. As you might recall, this is part of the ongoing conversation around a variety of things related to Envision Eugene. One very important part is MPT. And as you know, the council has put a moratorium on MPT. And our intent is to get as much feedback from you as we can this evening, which then we will take and eventually come back to you in work sessions and public hearings and eventually for your action. The intent is to be able to have all that done in time to not -- or prior to the expiration of the moratorium on the MPT. So, Denny, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. As the city manager indicated this evening, our primary focus is to get your feedback on potential modifications to the multi-unit property tax exemption program, which we call MPT. MPT is a longstanding program. It supports the construction of multi-unit housing, specifically in the downtown core area. Again, recently, council suspended the MPT program to review potential modifications. In accordance with the ordinance, the suspension ordinance, that suspension sunsets on June 30th, and council has expressed the desire to have modifications in place before that sunset date. So just really briefly, the MPT purpose, as stated in the state statutes and in our program ordinance, it really clearly supports the construction of transit-oriented, multi-unit housing in core areas, urban centers, and along transit corridors. And the purpose is really strongly aligned with the downtown plan and strongly aligned with the compact development and transportation Envision Eugene pillar. And as we highlighted in our discussions with you at the council workshop where we focused on Envision Eugene and economic prosperity, we anticipate using tools such as MPT to help us meet our future multifamily housing needs within the urban growth boundary. So again, the existing boundary for the MPT program is the downtown plan area. This is a representative projects of the -- representative of the projects that have been approved within the existing MPT boundary. It's six projects. This represents about 15 years of MPT activity within the downtown plan area. And not including the Capstone project, just to give you a sense of activity, the projects represent about 315 new MPT housing units that have been constructed in the downtown plan area, again, over really more than about 15 years. And over the 30-year program, again, just to give you a sense of scale, the program's gone -- undergone several boundary amendments, but overall, the program has averaged about one MPT project per year over that 30-year history. One of the things that has been expressed is a lot of interest in Portland's program, which is the multi-unit limited tax exemption program, which they call Multi. And it's authorized under the same state statutes that we use in our MPT program. And like their -- like our MPT, their program has changed a lot over time, and they've recently undergone some changes, so some folks have asked for us to look at that program. In the packet, we have a detailed kind of comparison of the two programs, and I'm not going to cover it all, but I do want to point out just a few highlights amongst the two programs. The purpose is pretty similar. It's clearly aligned with the state's mandate for the program to be supportive of transit-oriented development. A distinct difference really is that our program really is targeting a broad range of housing types and sale prices and rental rates throughout the downtown. Theirs has a specific requirement for affordable housing, so over time, they have tweaked their program to have it more focused on specific affordable housing goals. That's one of the main differences in purpose. Looking at the boundary, there's also some significant differences when you look at the eligible areas. This is a map of the Portland city limits, and the blue highlighted area that you see there, that's their multi-eligible areas. And they have included downtown, commercial centers, corridors, and transit stops, or areas around transit stops as multi-eligible areas in their program. They have about 17 square miles of eligible boundary in their program, and that represents about 11 and 1/2 percent of their city limits. What we've done here is overlayed the Eugene city limits and overlaid our existing downtown plan area, just for comparison. Our MPT eligible area is about a half of a square mile, and it represents about 1% of the city limits, just again for comparison. One of the things that you'll notice if you look at where we're headed for, the path that we're on relative to Envision Eugene, and really focusing on downtown, commercial centers, and corridors, that really is where Portland ended up. They took their multi-tool and they really put it and placed it in areas to really accommodate future growth in the city. So, you know, at first glance, they're just a little bit ahead of us as far as how they use their program to implement their growth strategies. Regarding the application process, again, they're very similar. I won't harp on it very much. A couple of major differences is that they actually have a specific application period. They open applications annually. They create kind of a competitive environment for their tax exemptions by having an open application progress process each year. The other major difference is that they actually have a higher application fee than we do. Ours is $400. There's currently is $11,000. They intend for that to cover the cost of administering their program because theirs is more complicated than ours. But they also have indicated that that fee actually doesn't cover their administration costs, that in a sense, they subsidize the program using some other sources of funding. Regarding the application submission requirements, again, if you look at the two programs, they're fairly similar. They have a more prescriptive list of what they call for as far as financial performance, 15-year performance and such, but generally, we ask for the same basic information. They ask for some additional information regarding affordable housing or that's related to affordable housing. For example, they ask for a market study if you're petitioning to meet an 80% median income threshold in their affordable housing requirement rather than the 60% median income Regarding the financial analysis, again, very similar, done on the staff level. The major difference is we use an outside review by our loan advisory committee to actually review the staff analysis that we do, financial analysis that we do. There are some minimum requirements that are actually much different. We have a minimum of five units to be eligible. They have a minimum of 10 units to be eligible. We have public benefit criteria that we basically used, that's really used through a scoring system to gauge whether or not a project creates enough public benefit to be considered for approval. They actually have specific requirements. For example, they cap the rate of return at 10%. They have a requirement that 20% of the units be affordable to households earning 60% of median income, and you must meet a green building standard in their program. So it's a little different approach. They have more prescriptive requirements in their program. They also have a public benefit scoring system similar to what we have. We use ours as, again, a way to gauge whether or not we should recommend them for approval. They use it as really as a way to rank applicants that have already met the minimum threshold and, again, in a kind of a competitive environment. The compliance requirements are different. We basically include a resolution that describes the project and the public benefits that they have to meet. We can disqualify them if they don't meet them. They actually signed a fairly complex agreement where they have extended use agreement related to affordable housing. They have, within that, there's an agreement, the 10% return, and what happens if they don't meet the 10% return, they are subject to some repayment of their tax exempt at the end of the tax exemption. And they call that an accrued payment liability, and we can get into more detail, but basically, if a project exceeds their 10% return, you either have to pay back that tax exemption down to a 10% return level, or you can extend the affordability period for additional five years as a way to basically make a contribution back if your project exceeds the cap. So moving on to some of the things that we've heard, besides looking at Portland's program, I just wanted to highlight some of those things. First, the idea of capping the project's financial return has surfaced as something that we might consider. And there's some variations under that concept that I just wanted to talk about briefly. One idea is to create a scalable program, which basically means we would conduct a comprehensive financial analysis upfront and potentially using a third party, for example, to review that financial analysis. And based on that review, the exemption would be scalable. For example, you would be able to receive a five-year exemption, or a seven-year exemption, or a 10-year exemption based on what the performer tells us about when you might reach that capped return. As part of that scalable program, a developer could choose to add elements to the project. For example, in order to get the full 10-year exemption, they could include affordable housing. They could pay into an affordable housing fund. They could do off-site public improvements, open space, or basically deliver other desired outcomes as part of the project in order to maximize the exemption. The other concept is, we call it a clawback provision, which basically what Portland is doing, at the end of the tax exemption period, any excess return over that cap would be returned in some shared way to the city. Another idea that has surfaced is the idea of a review panel, which is a little bit different approach, which would basically mean there would be some kind of periodic review by a panel, looking at the project returns based on the financial statements that are submitted, for example. And if projects are generally exceeding that cap return, they could make some recommendations regarding what we do with the program. Should we discontinue the program? Should we shift the criteria? Should we target other areas? Another thing we've heard is that we should require financial reporting. Currently, we don't collect financial statements, for example, after the project is complete. And there's really a few ways that those financial statements could be used. First, it could be used to evaluate project performance over time throughout the MPT program. So it'd be really a way for us to educate ourselves. And again, if project returns are trending upwards, the council will have the ability to look at the program and determine whether or not there should be some adjustments. They could terminate the program, again, change the areas, the target areas, and so forth. Another reason that financial reporting may come into play is it could be used as a basis for looking at this clawback scenario at the end of the exemption period. So again, collect financial statements and use that as a basis for calculating a clawback. There's a couple of considerations under this. Financial statements are not typically disclosed for public review, so those wouldn't, the expectation would not likely be that those would be vetted in public. And also that, you know, you should consider that the payment in lieu -- so what we've heard is that there might be some flexibility. There might be some situations where financial statements, because they're large institutional investors, for example, they may not want to disclose financial statements, they may not have the ability to disclose. So there may be some flexibility or alternative paths for those special circumstances where they could choose another path, a payment in lieu of reporting of those financial statements, or something of that nature. And again, just to note that there's obviously some increased administrative costs as associated with this continual monitoring of financial statements, et cetera. We've also heard that, you know, green building standards should be met in the MPT program. This is fairly straightforward. We already have some criteria in our program regarding green building standards, and it really, I think, would come down to creating a menu of options, lead, silver, earth advantage, and basically putting that in the ordinance as far as a minimum threshold that would be met. The other thing, another thing that we've heard is that we should consider capping the MPT volume. And again, we've highlighted a few different approaches here. The first that would be that we basically provide an annual cap on the dollar amount of exemptions that are approved. And this is basically the Portland approach, where they have created a $1 million per year cap on the exemptions. Another concept that has been brought forward is the idea of this rolling budget cap, which is kind of complicated, but basically what it means is that we set a cap and that it would be a program-wide limit on the amount of exemptions. And as soon as we meet that cap, then the program would, in effect, be suspended until some of the other projects come onto the tax rolls, which would free some room under the cap to offer some additional exemptions. Some considerations related to this approach, depending on how high you set up the cap, a couple of large projects could shut the program down for a few years. Most projects are opportunity-driven. It would be hard for projects that are ready to go to sit and wait for the next project to come off or come onto the tax rolls, so you may lose some opportunities in that scenario. And if, again, if you look at the conclusions of the technical resource group that worked on Envision Eugene, they basically concluded that the form and the density of development that we're looking for is not likely to occur without the benefit of some form of financial investment on the part of the city. So there may not be projects that happen during the suspension period if the rolling cap is reached, and we assume that maybe some project would be built. Well, the other side of that is maybe there won't be any projects built, so we're kind of delaying the long-term kind of financial benefits that projects may achieve over time. The other concept is to cap the number of units. This would be consistent with Envision Eugene. There's an identified gap. We've identified 1,600 units in that gap, and maybe we could somehow cap the number of units in the MPT program rather than a dollar amount. There's also been some discussion about whether or not MPT should support student housing. A couple of considerations that we've heard relative to student housing. The first one is that student housing should be defined. What do we mean when we say student housing? Is it student housing because of the location? For example, because it's close to the university, we just assume that it's, will be occupied by students? Because of the actual occupants, are there students versus non-students in the units? For example, Dan Neal's project on the Pearl, there's about 80% students and 20% non-students, so how would we define that as a student housing project or not? Or because of unit types? There are types of units that are more conducive for student living, for example, quads. It comes up quite a bit. The other thing that we've heard related to student housing is that there is going to be, that there should be more focus on specific outcomes, desirable outcomes related to student housing. For example, if we're going to provide MPT support for student housing, it should support transit-oriented development, locations that are conducive to transit-oriented uses, enhance neighborhood livability, support a vibrant downtown. Look at the unit types, the occupant mix, whether or not those units can be convertible at some point in the future if student housing market starts to dry up. We've also heard support for student housing, I mean, I'm sorry, support for affordable housing. Portland currently requires 20% of the units be responsive to affordable housing needs. Of course, this reduces the project income and has the ability to negatively impact project feasibility. We've talked about Portland having a higher median income and how that makes it maybe a little bit easier for their project to meet an affordability standard. There's some alternatives. The idea of a payment in lieu that would be dedicated to affordable housing is another approach. They've already been, also been some discussions about if there is a clawback provision, that those funds that come back to the city be dedicated to affordable housing. Support for local contractors and local jobs has also been something that we've heard. A couple of different approaches. We could require a provision, a standard, that must be met as part of the MPT program. Of course, we'd have to look at legal issues and other issues. Another approach would be to acquire more upfront information on what are their hiring plans, and maybe the exemption could even be adjusted based on their meeting some specific goals about local hiring. In other words, a shorter-term exemption if they're not met, or you could maximize your exemption if you meet some local hiring requirements. Finally, the thing that, another thing that we've heard is that the existing project approval process creates some uncertainty. We use a public benefit criteria scoring system that's really not well-integrated with the approval process, and that we should consider an objective minimum threshold requirements that are clearly focused on specific desirable outcomes like targeted locations, types of projects, project features that include lead and accessibility and so forth, so that this process that developers enter is a little bit more predictable. So identifying the next steps, you know, if we're going to complete the modifications to the program by the end of June, we've kind of outlined the next steps that we would anticipate, starting with us getting feedback today and coming back with some draft modifications to the program. In the interim, we would seek some community and stakeholder input, potentially come back to council in a work session on May 13th. The next public hearing opportunity that we have targeted is May 20th, in which we would have the public comment on some potential modifications. And then council action on May 28th on a new ordinance, and that would give us the 30 days for the ordinance to be in place, so that we would actually be done by the targeted end of June date. So again, today, specific feedback on these examples of some of the things that have surfaced, as well, or any other ideas would be very helpful, so that we can take those and come back with some recommendations.
Thank you, Denny, and thank you for really trying to pull out everything you've heard thus far. I really appreciate that. It was very, very thorough. Before I call on George Brown and Mike Clark, I just had a question. It seems to me that there's been some legislative movement in the direction of these kinds of MPTs and things of that sort. Are you seeing any trends in terms of the legislature putting any kind of restrictions around this or anything of that sort?
The state legislature, if you recall, we extended our MPT program
Right.
-- because it was sunsetting. They have extended the program for 10 years.
Okay.
So my assumption, and I have not heard of any other activity amongst the state legislature, I think they will probably review it at the end of 10 years, is what I would forecast.
The other question I had under the section under MPT modifications, where it talks about enhancing neighborhood livability, perhaps there's a slash in there of a modicum of negative impact as well. Yeah. And then on the MPT modifications, the next one, it talks about, I think this idea of, what did I want to say about that? Oh, the affordable housing requirement, the thing that that makes me think about is, I don't see this moving. The thing that makes me think about is this is one way that you can get affordable housing distributed around the community, because if you, if your aim is not only to have more affordable housing, but to use this as a tool to help it find locations, this may be one way to keep up with our council goal of just even distribution of affordable housing around the community. And then on the, I just hope we get both business and labor input into these local contractors and local jobs issues that we hear from sort of both sides of the continuum on that. That's all for me. George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. There's stuff in there I never even thought about, and I've been studying this pretty intensely the last few months, so there's some interesting new ideas in there. Thank you. Well, I, you know, I really am convinced that we need to seriously revise our program because I still think it's a valuable instrument to incentivize housing, but I, I'll save this part of the discussion for later, but I really question the need for, to have it continue downtown. I think it should be maybe sunsetted downtown and extended to Highway 99, train song. Those are major transportation corridors. Really in need of investment commercially and housing, housing-wise. And so I'm really going to push for that, I guess. I think that we should think about establishing some minimum threshold requirements like Portland Housing Bureau does. I really like their 20% affordable requirement. 20% of the units have to be affordable. I like the green building. They offer four options. You have to, the developer has to certify they're going to use one of those options. I imagine that there's a price range in all those options, so I haven't really checked that out, but I imagine, you know, okay, so they have to do 20% affordable, well, then they could pick the cheaper option. And they apply, I mean, you know, this is one thing about our scoring system I've never understood. One of their minimum threshold requirements is that when you make your application, it is in the multi-zone. We'll award 100 points for that. That's cookie. I mean, because if you, I mean, you could apply, but if you're not applying in the zone, you're not going to get any kind of an exact exemption, so merely because you're applying in the zone, the only zone where it's offered, to get 100 points is kind of silly. What is, what is our minimum number of points that an applicant has to achieve to get to be eligible for the MPT?
We consider 100 points to be the minimum threshold in order to get a recommendation of approval, and that 100 points downtown is kind of a carryover of the old boundary. Downtown was considered to be important enough to give it that kind of weight.
I see.
And we didn't change the point system when we shrunk the boundary.
Yeah. Well, I really like the idea of, I think, establishing some minimum thresholds, and I've heard from a couple of local developers here who have been chatting with all kinds of people about this. And they said, no, the 20% affordable thing, that's two different funding streams. It'd be too complicated. We're not sophisticated enough to do that, and so on. And, you know, well, rents are higher in Portland, incomes are higher, they can charge higher rents, but land's cheaper here to offset some of that difference there. And I don't know if we get it.
Next round, George?
Yes, please.
Mike Clark?
Thanks, Mayor. I sense from all the discussions that most of us want to keep this incentive in place, but a good number of us would like to adjust it in ways to make it more, produce perhaps more benefits for our local quality of life. One of my chief concerns is that if we do make adjustments, and there's an adjustment, at least one that I'd like to see, that we not overburden this incentive in a way that removes it as a viable incentive to produce the public good that we're trying to produce by having it. So one of the slides you put up talked about the staff checking in with stakeholders and community groups and some of the folks like the mayor mentioned, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, but I'd like that conversation to take place with all of us, because any time you institute new regulations, you're going to get unintended consequences. So if we have a lot of ideas about how we'd like to alter this incentive, I'd like to hear from the people who organize and run developments like this about what will be the actual on-the-ground impacts of our ideas to change it. I don't want to know what we think will happen or what we, what may happen. I'm talking about having a conversation with the people that do this work, so that we have a clear have a clear understanding of what will happen when we make changes to this. The second piece there is that we have a rather constant-running debate about the fact that we'll have someone apply for this and essentially swear to it when they sign the application, and then a good number of us say, well, that just isn't true about a particular piece of the information they provided. So I'd like us to stop having that argument by having a direct conversation with people and confronting that issue. Would it be built if not for the incentive? And if not, why not? And have a very direct conversation about it, so we can stop having that rather circular argument. Lastly, my personal choice is that we do a great deal more to incentivize the hiring of local contractors if we're going to offer this. I think that if we're going to offer local tax dollar incentives, that it ought to produce a great deal more in the way of local people benefiting from the work. And so that's going to be the chief concern for me. And I'd love to hear more from, I guess maybe from Glenn, about the legal issues involved that you mentioned. I mean, can we require 50%? Can we, you know, local hires and understand what that'll do to the project potentially?
I don't know what I can do with that as part of your staff now.
Okay. I'd like to hear a thorough discussion of what are the legal questions or the legal issues around us requiring a percentage of local hire and/or some manner of process to determine whether local folks are or are not qualified. Thank you. Yes, Mayor, perhaps a second round?
Okay. Greg Evans?
Mayor, thank you. A couple of things that came to mind here in the presentation, and thank you, Denny, for that. One is the concept of transit-oriented development, and we've talked a lot about that, not just here at this particular table, but around Envision Eugene and MX/Mus rapid transit. One of the things that I'd like to see us do is to look at what Portland has done in terms of developing along our BRT lines. We have a BRT overlay map that has several areas that have critical need for housing development, whether that's affordable housing, mid-range housing, upscale housing. There's some needs for that, and I'm looking specifically at, going back to the idea of Trainsong, West University, River Road, Highway 99, and possibly West 11th too, along the Highway 99 corridor, 6th, 7th. I also would like us to entertain the idea of not only looking at affordable units as being a goal, but also developing an emergency shelter fund in which the developers can contribute to that fund, a certain amount that would be set aside for emergency shelter. I think that in addition to the issue of affordable housing, we also have another run that is below that of affordable housing, and that underclass is growing rapidly, unless we have some way of getting some more money infused into that area, we're going to continue to have some, you know, major problems. Also looking at the issue of street improvements, I know that's more of an STC kind of thing, but we have a lot of the areas that I just mentioned that are in desperate need for sidewalks, better drainage, other things of that nature, and I don't know how we can craft this to, you know, be able to get some of that benefit, but again, looking at some kind of set aside to be able to address that. And going back to Councilor Clark's issue with, which is also an issue of me, of local business participation as contractors as well as workers, is there a way that we can develop a point system instead of necessarily a quote-unquote "set aside," a percentage set aside, that will reward contractors for hiring local workers as well as engaging local contractors?
Another round. Council Evans?
Yep, one more.
Okay. Claire, Ms. Rett?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, and then I'll add to the conversation. So the chart that was given to us showing the current MUPD sites was helpful, but it didn't tell us the mix of the rentals that those reflect in terms of trying to spread it between high, medium, low kind of rental housing, so I'd like to see that detail. I'm curious why the council reduced the boundary to downtown and took Trainsong off of there when that happened. Can anyone speak to that?
I think the primary focus at the time was to remove West University, which we did. And I don't, I don't have a real good sense of exactly why Trainsong, other than there was clear support for, there's clear support for coming back.
Nobody, nobody during the time it was, it was available, nobody applied for it in the Trainsong, and I believe Andrew Ortiz was the one that brought that up to our attention when we were having the discussion.
I was just wondering where we cut it.
And I think there was also the recognition that we would be coming back, and I think the downtown one at that time, there was a specific purpose for continuing that one, but we were going to come back and talk about all the, all the particular geographical areas that they would apply to include Trainsong, so I don't think there was the intent that it would never come back. It was just at that time, only a portion of it was extended.
I do remember that conversation now, and what I do remember about it, it wasn't, we were all about taking off, off the West University area.
Right.
It wasn't about taking Trainsong and 99?
It was just Trainsong.
Yeah, out. It was more like, we need a bigger discussion, and so we will, we'll just keep, we'll keep the downtown one for right now, but we're coming back to have a broader discussion, and that will be part of that discussion.
Yes, which we're having now.
Yes.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. So some of my thoughts are, I like this idea of working some kind of payment into affordable housing, and I really appreciate Council Evans bringing up the idea of emergency shelter, because some of the funds we get from the feds for housing, we cannot use necessarily for emergency shelter. They want it to be used for permanent housing. So finding an alternative for some funding that we can control locally for that kind of shelter, I think, seems to be fairly urgent. We do, in terms of targeting this to specific areas, by setting a boundary, we are then targeting it to a specific area. So I think by using that feature of a boundary, wherever we decide to set it, we're already targeting where we want to see this kind of development. So it seems to me, with the conversations that have been going on around Envision Eugene and the transit corridor, that we would want to look at the map reflecting kind of what Portland has done with theirs, which is targeting parts of the community that we want to see this kind of housing. Some of the things that I'd like to see as minimum threshold have already been mentioned, green building, standard, the issue of some kind of affordable housing or an emergency shelter, though I have a little bit of a concern, because I'm hearing that Portland's has to be affordable for a certain period of time, and then they can go to market rates with it, so that makes me concerned that folks might be living there who then get displaced if their unit turns into a market rate unit, and I wouldn't want that to be a feature of our program. Obviously, if it's in, within the zone, it shouldn't be given points for that, so we need to get rid of that feature. I'm wondering about exploring a higher application fee, even though it doesn't cover all the costs, and I wonder, folks in Portland, are they reimbursed that fee if their application is not successful?
They actually pay the fee once they're approved, is my understanding, and that's, that fee is split with the county, because the county tax assessor's office has some role in administering the program, and they pay, you know, an initial, half of it, for example, at approval, and then the other half at some later point, maybe when they do their first, when the project's complete.
Okay. I think also minimum threshold, a plan for mitigation of the impact of construction on neighbors and the surrounding area, and a plan for not just local businesses being part of the process, but recruiting also, maybe extra points for minority and women-owned contracts. I like the idea of a cap on total per year approved exemptions, and I'll take a second round.
Okay. Alan?
Yeah, a couple of questions, and a couple of comments. I noticed in the write-up that Portland does it a little differently. They do a, so they set an annual cap and do a competitive process, and everybody applies on a certain period of time, and then they pick?
Yes, and initially, they set out to have one of those a year. They're going to maybe potentially two rounds per year, so for example, if the first round doesn't, they don't reach the million-dollar cap in the first round, they would do a supplemental later that year, which they're going to do this year. So yes, they, once they reach a cap, that cap amount, that million dollars in any given year, they approve those, and then next, the next year, the slate is wiped clean and they start all over. They don't carry forward any, you know, available balance or anything.
I think that has a lot of appeal, to have a window and then close it, and then you have some certainty around it. I kind of like that idea. I guess there's pros and cons if you think about that, but as opposed to just whenever they come in, and, you know, if you're first in the door, you're lucky. If you're, if you're last in the door, you're unlucky, if you have a cap, which, which wouldn't make much sense to me.
Portland also has more prescriptive requirements, and therefore their scoring makes more sense from that perspective, because they're competing against each other. Ours doesn't make that much sense. In fact, one time, people didn't make the minimum requirement, still gave them MUPD. So the scoring and the bonus points in a competitive process makes a lot of sense if we were to do it as a competitive thing and put a cap on it. When I was thinking earlier of a cap, I was thinking of a rolling cap, but an annual cap works in a different way, but accomplishes the same thing, which is some accountability and having a budget around this. Right now, we had no sense of how much it was or what we were doing on an annual basis, and whether or not that was a good thing or a bad thing. And so, but one of the things I wanted to get out of this whole process was to create more certainty around the public benefits of MUPD in particular, and to me, that means having some of these minimum requirements in there, and then, and more disclosure about what's going on within the program. And I think that's what Portland does, but they also have the higher fee to help pay for that, because it's more complicated, so that's something I think we could explore as well. And expanding this to the, in the Envision Eugene transit corridors makes a lot of sense to me as well. So when I talked about this earlier, I had five or six things that I wanted to see, which was a cap on the amount of rate return with a share of the savings kind of approach, if it went above that, a requirement for an annual financial reporting, because really today, you can't tell the answer to your question, Mike, is it, or would it, or would not? The Butford test is too difficult to do beforehand, you can't tell. With annual reporting, I think it makes it a heck of a lot clearer. I like the minimum requirement of lead silver or earth-advantaged silver. It gets, sets up the public benefit. And on the affordable housing part, I also like the budget cap, either the rolling or an annual one. And then on local contractors' requirement, I agree with that too, and I'm actually formulating right now a work session poll for council to have a work session on requirements for the city to have local, local contractors, use local contractors for procurement of professional services, as well as city projects where we build things, as well as tax exemptions.
Another round, Alan? Denny?
First, I think there should be a higher fee. Well, actually, I think we should get rid of MUPD. I think it has served a purpose in the heart of downtown. In the university district, it didn't serve a good purpose at all, and I think it has served enough, done enough for downtown that we should eliminate it. But if we keep it, it sounds as if we will, I think the application fee should be higher. I just learned that someone who wants to move a small business to Eugene has an application permit fee of $9,500, which is not refundable, and that seems like too much. This seems, this fee seems like too little. They're, in this case, they're asking for a benefit for them. I don't think we were ever, anyone's ever going to tell you that they could build it without it if they wanted the MUPD. They're going to say, this is the only way we can build it. And so saying, would you say that? Of course they'll say that if they want the tax exemption. I think it hasn't been used for the purpose it supposedly far, which is to build multiple-unit housing where it's needed. It's just like urban renewal in that sense, which was supposed to be to counteract blight, and it has been used for all sorts of other reasons. As for the, using money for shelter, if they paid their taxes in the first place, we would have extra money to establish shelters, maybe. I do believe everybody should pay taxes, especially when some people are having such a, such a struggle to pay their taxes. I like the, I think, I like the idea of having less expensive housing, 20%, I think it was, if, or 60, 20% for people with 60% of median income. And that is not different from Portland. It would be our median income here and their median income there, so it doesn't matter that their income is higher than ours, if it's 60% of median income. I think that's an excellent requirement if we continue having it. And I, I'll probably want another purpose, another purpose, another, another round, but that purpose is what I'm concerned about, and I haven't seen us, I don't think we've ever refused one. We, and it was never intended that you had to, the points didn't say you had to approve it, but we just automatically approve it every time someone asks for it. So I, my, my best hope is that we get rid of it, but the next hope is we have some better requirements. Thanks.
George Poling?
First of all, I want to thank staff for doing the comparison between Eugene and Portland. However, sometimes reading, and it was like apples and oranges. There are good things that we could pull from, from that comparison, but there's also some things that are completely unrelated to our, our specific area, so I do appreciate that. The other thing I liked was the list of projects no longer exempt under the MUPD program in the past. If you look at the totals, the total of tax money collected the first year from all these properties that the exemptions ran out is more than 10 times what the exemptions were for the taxes collected during that time. If you, if you run down that list, the one-year, one-year taxes collected was $34,000. Over a 10-year period, that's $340,000. The first year that all these programs came off the exemption was $523,000. So it's not like the people aren't paying taxes, they continue to pay taxes on the property, it's the assessments on the improvements. So that part of it seems to be working. We are getting some, some return for, for the investment there. Also, I like the idea of local hires. However, there are certain times that, depending on the project, the location, et cetera, et cetera, that maybe we don't have the expertise locally, but I do encourage us, whenever possible, to do the, the local hiring, and I don't know whether it's a, you know, how to come up with that definition. That's something I'll let the, the community give us some ideas on. I also like the idea of the concentrating on the transit corridors, since we're putting so much emphasis on the Envision Eugene, it looks like that's where the major redevelopment is going to be going on, so concentrating on those corridors is a, is a good idea. And perhaps maybe, and this is something that Alan brought up, was the, the remain, the return amount.
Rate of return.
Rate of return, thank you. Perhaps we can, you know, I think Portland currently is at 10%, that they, they have to start paying back. Maybe we could lower our percentage to a certain degree, and then earmark some of the money that is paid back for us to go into the affordable housing or the emergency shelter housing programs. You know, that's another conversation we could have in addition to the additional fees that we're going to be, we could possibly charge the developers. Defining student housing, I think, is going down a slippery slope. I mean, we could probably come up with nine different definitions of student housing. You know, my ward has a lot of apartment complexes over there off Garden Way. It's not student housing, but you walk through there and it looks like it because of the age and the location, but it's not technically student housing, so I think that's going to be a tough definition to come up with. And I only have one more, so if I could get back in the queue again, please.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the conversations happening, and it's obvious this is just the beginning, because there's a lot of really good points that are being raised. The one that keeps circulating for me, though, the one I keep coming back to, is the notion of us being able to be very clear and articulate, this is something that Alan said, on what exactly we mean- exactly we mean when we talk about community benefit. Because the whole point of providing an investment like this is that there's some sort of a payoff. There's a benefit. And we're trying to get at what that benefit is. And we've had, you know, some definitions of benefit before, but I think we really need to tighten up on exactly how we think that benefit will pay off for us. And the one factor for me that I think is relevant, and we want to make sure it gets mixed into the conversation about it, is when does that community benefit become realized? We have operated kind of on a strategy that one of the community benefits, the financial one, is realized after 10 years, that you get, you start getting that money back after 10 years. But I think there's other kinds of benefits that we may be able to realize sooner than that. Aesthetic benefits, construction benefits, employment benefits. There may be other kinds of, of benefits that could be realized sooner than that. I know that some of the concerns folks have had about Mupti have been with regard to the benefit. They don't perceive that we get right away. That because people are not paying taxes right now, that's actually a, a community hindrance as opposed to a benefit. And so, it becomes, part of the conversation becomes, what is the immediate benefit versus the long-term benefit? And how do we balance what it is we really want to achieve? For some folks, the best benefit is the one we get right away. So, I want the money now. Others might say, well, I'm willing to forego some money now because I think I'll make more money later on. That's why I think of it as, as an investment. How certain can we be that that kind of an investment, like interest on a savings account, will pay off or will it fall down? You don't want to make an investment that's not going to pay off later on. If you're going to forego the money while you make the investment, you want to make sure it pays off. We're beginning to talk about what mechanisms we can put in place, whether it's revenue return options or investments in the community or other ways, that if we're going to forego the immediate benefit, we know with a higher degree of certainty that there will still be a greater benefit later on. Some of the ideas around investments that the organization could make in the community so that we could see some benefit more quickly and right away, I think would be some things we could talk about so that we could look at what, what that investment can pay off for us, both in the short and the middle and the long term.
I kind of think of this as a, we, we don't have very many tools in our city toolbox to get things done that we want to get done. This is one of them. It's sort of, to me, it's getting what you want where you want it. That's the, kind of the whole, the whole, the whole goal. Second round here, George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to point out that Portland charges the fee of $11,000 and also they charge, Multnomah County gets $6,000 in addition because they're the tax collector and they're impacted by, by these forgone revenues, just like the city of Portland is. The two guiding principles of the Portland limited tax exemption, and I, I had phone conversations with Kate Allen, I think Denny knows, she knows, she's talked to Denny before, so everyone knows Kate. And she's fabulous and she's been with the program many, many, many years. The two guiding principles of their whole program, this is the bedrock of their whole thing, are affordability and community benefits. She emphasized that to me. I asked, I really think we need to have an affordability component, 20% affordable. I asked, I hope all y'all had a chance to see the questions that I submitted to Portland Housing Bureau and her answer. She answered all of them. I asked specifically, does the requirement that 20% of total units be affordable pose any unusual hardship for the applicant? Must the applicant secure other funding sources for the affordable portion of the project? She said, developers make it work. In theory, the combination of the benefit to the developer of not paying taxes on all of the residential units and the cross subsidy from the market rate units support the below-market rate units. Because this is a strictly voluntary program, we have to remember that, it's voluntary. The developer doesn't have, no one's making them apply for this. Strictly voluntary, we must assume that the model works and is profitable enough for developers who likely also have some civic social motivation to create mixed income housing. Further, I asked her, well, gee, you know, I've heard from a couple developers here in town, well, gosh, you know, it's too, it'd be too complicated. She told me she knows two recently successful applicants in Portland who would be happy and thrilled to speak with local developers who are interested in this program. And I was, would imagine how much more detailed conversations with our staff to, to show how that it does work up there. Does it weed some people out? Probably does. It probably does. But I think they end up with, with some really good ones. Is it, I asked another question, well, how many were, what's the recent history? In 2012, eight applications were approved in Portland. That's through the competitive process, including five which were approved prior to the new guidelines. We approved four, approved four. Portland's way bigger than Eugene.
George, you want to add a round?
Yes, please, every round.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Glenn, I appreciate your offer of a memo to talk about the legal issues that surround the issue of local hire. I'm wondering if it's at all possible, I know this is probably a fairly complex issue, but if there's any way to get some more, or at least very general guidelines around the issue by late tomorrow, first of Wednesday, that would be very helpful to me. I have a meeting with a group of area contractors here in a couple of days that have some concerns about where policy is and they want to have input on where it goes. And I want to be better educated about that, so if that's at all possible, rather than doing it right now, I'd appreciate it. Secondly, I appreciate what Alan said about local hire as it pertains to multiple aspects of the organization. I've thought that many times myself, especially when we got a, as somebody in that business, when we got a new website and where we had that done and so forth. One of the concerns around that, though, that I think make it, makes it fundamentally different than the Mupti conversation, at least for me, is that the difference between, not the community benefit so much, but the cost to the community. When we're offering a tax incentive, we're still, we're not, if people don't take advantage of it, we're not getting any, we're not losing anything we didn't have in the first place. But when we pay actual money for goods and services as a community, I'd like us to retain the, the lowest cost alternative as a way to go rather than that. And that's why I want to make sure we build in everything we can with regard to hiring local folks with this because it doesn't have the same cost to taxpayers that another alternative might. Thank you.
Gray?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple things to kind of finish up my original thoughts, and I've been kind of researching this and looking into some different areas too, is the concept of having a tiered system. And that would be for me being, having, you know, a five-year exemption mark in which if you meet a certain criteria, you would get that five-year exemption. You have to have a higher bar to meet a seven-year exemption. And further, to meet the 10-year exemption, you have to have a further ultimate maximum of rate of return for the, for the city to be, to be able to gain that exemption. So, I, I think having those kinds of incentives built in into a tiered system makes a lot more sense to me than having a flat 10-year exemption. The other thing that I'm looking at too is this, mixed-use development as being of collateral benefit, looking at the advantages of not just building the housing, but also creating a development that would maximize commercial retail in the area, if not a part of the development, that would be adjacent to the development. Also, if we could develop a point system that looks at that local definition. Again, my understanding legally, and I don't, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't play one on TV either, but that the local area is defined as the state of Oregon. And I think that some of us at the table have a different concept of what we mean by local. And I think it's more to Eugene and Lake County than it is to the entire state. It makes sense in some areas, like with disadvantaged women-owned and minority-owned businesses, since we don't have a lot in this particular local area. But there are others that are outside of this area that could also benefit as well and would be, love to come down the freeway and, and work in this area. And I'm looking also at, as well as transit nodal development. So, transit stations that ultimately will be developed in these areas. So, for instance, one of the, the things that we talked about at LTD, or at least I talked about it anyway, was the idea of having a transit station somewhere in the area of Highway 99 and Garfield. And that if we had a mixed-use development of, of housing plus, you know, commercial retail, plus a transit station, I think would be an excellent opportunity. And this is a good way of incentivizing and giving us that leverage to do that.
Claire?
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, again, my fellow counselors have, I think, really good ideas. And obviously, I think we need to dig into the details a little bit for how we choose which way we're going to go with some of the particulars. But in terms of scaling the program, I think that is something we should definitely explore, whether it's a gradual reduction in the exemption over a period of time, if it's over a certain rate of return, or a, a tiered system such as Councilor Evans has suggested. I think we should look at those options, see how they would be administered and how they might impact the program. And right now, how does the point system for the affordable housing piece work with our current project?
There's a point category for affordable housing. It's just one of an array of points that you can achieve, either through, you know, green building, how you treat parking, what density you achieve, whether you include affordable housing. It's really a menu of options to, and again, the goal would be that amongst that menu, you would at least get to 100 points, whether you're doing affordable housing or green building or how you're treating parking. You don't have to do all of them, it's just a, a kind of a menu.
But the affordable housing piece, is it, how is it, is it 20%? It's 60% of median income? What's the detail on that?
Yes, there are thresholds. There's, I think in the packet is the actual public benefit criteria. I have to go back and look, but I believe there is a 60% threshold. There might be an 80% threshold and there are points depending on how many units and so forth.
60.
Oh, thank you.
60.
At 60% of median income, at 20% of the units would be, would be set aside for...
Talking about in Portland?
No, here.
No, there's no, it's for each unit. You get 10 points for each unit.
For each unit of affordable housing?
10 points per units at 60% is the way it works, yes.
Okay. So, I, you know, I think we also want to consider additional points or if we use a point system for other community benefits, again, along the lines of what Councilor Evans mentioned, if they're filling a gap in retail, you know, we have parts of our community where you can't buy any fresh produce within walking distance of your house. Downtown, there's no place to get a prescription filled. So, providing a gap in needed retail services, also providing community space, and then enhancing a parks and open space aspect to the development, I think would all be good qualifications for additional community benefits beyond the minimum.
Alan?
So, back to what I was talking about before, which is the community benefit, which is the point, as Chris said, of, of this whole program, I think. To me, having minimum requirements in the program, in the program, Mupti program creates that kind of certainty that we can say, these are the public benefits that we've got. I think we have a hard time saying that now, in part because people don't understand the program. I mean, there's a lot of people think that Mupti program is a cash payment, not of our general fund to developers, which isn't at all the case. It's, it's, I just want to clarify, there's no cash payment to developers. It's a program designed to enable projects that would not otherwise happen except for Mupti to move forward. And that it's an annual tax exemption that we would not otherwise get had it not been for the Mupti program. The problem is, we can't really tell if that's true or not. With that, with very, we're very difficult telling one way or the other, which is why we need caps on the rate of return, which is why we need a budget, and which is why we also need reporting, annual reporting requirements. So, we can't actually tell that and, and make a definitive statement around that, or a more definitive statement anyway. And I agree that, and one of my early points was that we need to have this program also benefit and help create affordable housing. Question to me is, what's the best mechanism to get there? And, and the Portland model is interesting where it says 20% of the, of the units should be affordable. And there are numerous of those in Portland, but we have zero projects like that in the local area that I know of. And it's, and it's very, very difficult to do that where you have a mix of affordable end market in the same building because it makes the thing so much more complicated in terms of financing and tax credits and all this other stuff that in Eugene, we just, we don't do that. When I was talking to local developers, they said Portland is a very, very different market in terms of access to capital, in terms of experience with developers and the financial dealings with that, and especially the rent levels that you can charge, which makes for different types of projects that you can do that with, that you don't necessarily have here in Eugene. So, my, I, I think getting it in affordable housing is, is part of the goal, but I think we should make it more simple and more understandable. And that's why I was proposing a, a community benefits, one-time allocation of money to Affordable Housing Fund, which then can be used directly by our affordable housing to create that, instead of going through all this mix and trying to do that or having it dedicated to affordable housing. And as far as I know, none of the Mupti projects are affordable housing projects.
We don't have any, we don't have any affordable housing projects, at least in the, you know, my, my 20-plus years' history. Yes.
None of them were because our point system is, 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 doesn't push you one way or the other. It says, get 100 points any way of them, a bunch of different ways.
Another round.
One of them could be, could be through affordable housing.
So, and then finally, just one more point, and I don't need another round, is I like the idea of a tiered system for the length of term. Figuring out how to do that is a good idea.
George Poling?
Yeah, the tiered system does pique my interest. I'd like to get a little more information on that, see how that works out. One of the other points I was going to make about capping the Mupti volume, Denny said earlier in his presentation that a lot of these projects are opportunity-driven and they just come up at a certain point. And, and, you know, I think we have to really look at the issue of capping the Mupti volume because we don't know, we, we don't have the crystal balls to tell what's going to happen down the road. So, if we make it an annual thing or a rolling limit and something should come up that's a really good viable project, it may not happen. So, I think we need to really look at that. I mean, we've had, we've had properties sit vacant for years where we've just collected minimal taxes on it. And then for whatever reason, all of a sudden, it all came together at one time and we were able to go ahead and, you know, have someone come in with a, with an application for a Mupti project and we, we've approved it. So, you know, 10 years down the road, we'll start collecting some of that money back. So, I, I think we need to take a really hard look at capping the Mupti volume. And in answer to the affordable housing project, now, are you talking about low-income or housing that's affordable? You know, a lot of people refer to affordable housing, think of that as the, the low-income housing or something that somebody can afford. You know, the Obie project, Brian, Brian Obie's project is, is an example where he's going to be, you know, his, his projections are is to, to mix the type of housing along with some retail in there. So, that, that might be a test case.
But not in the same building.
But the same project, but not in the same building. I mean, that's a, that's a mega project, but we can see, might be able to see how that works. And maybe the, one of the reasons why we haven't had any affordable housing projects submit a Mupti is because of all the other programs we've had in the past. You know, all the land banking that the city did in the, you know, in the past, looking in the future to develop some of these projects. You know, a good example is Willackinsy Crossing, just down the street from my house. You know, we land banked all that property years, what was it, 2003, I think it was. And it finally came, came through here a couple of years ago. It's a great project. It's a beautiful project. So, you know, that may be one of the reasons why we haven't seen any, any affordable housing projects apply for a Mupti.
Betty?
Well, I think mixed in the...
Well, I think mixed in the same building is a very good goal. And I know they do it in downtown, they call it inclusionary zoning some places, but they do it, a lot of it in downtown Boston, for example. And it doesn't have to be really low income, but I think this 80%, 60% of the median income, that's a good, good place to start. I think it's good for people of different incomes to live near each other, so there's no, especially for children, so that they don't know they live in the projects, for As for the benefits being postponed, those people, if we're talking about housing, the people who move into those new places lived somewhere before and were paying taxes. So they move to this tax-exempt place, and for 10 years, they don't pay taxes. In some cases, they were paying a lot of taxes before, so it just moved, and it takes taxes away from the tax rolls, actually. Whether, if it's housing, if we're talking about a business that wouldn't have been there otherwise, it's a different matter. As for the local labor, I think that's really important. I know when Hyundai said they were hiring local people, but I toured that place at least three times, twice with Al Rappa. And if you talk to people, they all tell you where they came from. They did not come from Eugene, Arlene County, most of them. Of course, once you move here, then you're from here, but that, I think, the, and the local contractors, I, I'm not meeting with any contractors, as Mike is, but I have them approach me and say, I'm a contractor, or I'm a laborer, a construction worker, both of those things, and they say, they're very unhappy with our subsidizing projects, they're not hiring local or using local contractors. And I think there should be a way that we could say, you have to do that, if we're going to, if we're going to do it. And again, I'm, I'm just, I really want to wipe out, I think it's done what it can do, and I really want to wipe it out, but, thanks.
So, in, in the Portland area, is, when they list the two things as affordable, affordability and community benefits as being their guiding principles, do they list what those community benefits are in there, Mike, specifically?
Page 27.
Most of them are actually reflected in their minimum threshold requirement. So, you know, in Portland, they consider affordable housing to be a strong public benefit, so they put it in the actual requirements for the program. They also have some other scoring public benefits that, again, they use to rank, really a series of good applicants that all, all meet a minimum threshold, but they have to provide just a little bit more, maybe to, to rise to the top of the stack, so to speak.
Only reason, only reason I mention that, Denny, is that I'm, I would just be looking at, that we are as, for the public's sake, that we are as specific as possible about what we mean by community benefit, and which ones we're aiming at. And I think the basic threshold is not what we're aiming at. I think the best, the basic threshold is you don't even get to play in the game until you, you hit that basic threshold. And then the things that go above the threshold as your community benefit are the things that you're aspiring to and aiming to and putting extra emphasis. So there's a different level. It's not, the things that are under the threshold are just what we expect you to just enter the gate. And after that, we should be thinking really carefully about what is it that we think might be harder to get to, and then we want to use this as a, as a, as a tool for getting there. And then I don't know who this, all of us would listen to about this, but I do think there are some serious differences in the two markets, and between Eugene and Portland, and what will work in one place and what will work in the other. And some kind of analysis that we, we can put some cred in, I think, could help this, could help this, and I mean cred for everybody, so I think that it could help this conversation to where we can, as a, as a community, look, look more intelligently at this, because I think the things we get from Portland are very helpful and important to us, but then we have to figure out, put that in, in relationship, and maybe there's things that we could do that they can't do, so that it isn't, it isn't that you get less, it's just that it would be, you want to think about what suits your community and what your capacity is. And I think we don't want to, we are not like anybody else, we are ourselves. We can learn from others, but we need to look at what we want to have happen in our community, and that's why I really appreciated the things that Greg brought into the conversation about what, some of the things that we might do with this that are on our big, long, haven't dealt with list. So I, I really appreciate that being brought into the conver, it's a breath of fresh air. Thank you. George Brown, you're next, and then Mike Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I'd just like to point out that, you know, Portland is, is very clear in their expectations of community benefits, what they expect, what they actually require, beyond the minimum threshold requirements. That gets you up to the front door. If you don't fulfill the minimum threshold requirements, you don't get to walk in the door and, and take out an application. So, that's the first thing. Then you get priority points according to affordability in addition to the threshold requirements, units accessible to persons with special needs, such as the mentally or physically disabled, or other categories, family-sized, bonus points are available for family-sized units, that's two-plus bedrooms, in areas lacking housing units with two or more bedrooms, with appropriate family-friendly amenities, family recreational facilities for the children of the project residents, such as secure onsite play area, onsite garden area, et cetera, et cetera, access to grocery stores, schools, daycare, within a quarter of a mile, quality gathering space, exterior or interior, available to the community at large, this is a public benefit, such as permanent dedications for public use, including open space, community gardens, a portion of units reserved for an established partnership with an agency to provide services to vulnerable populations, such as youth who have transitioned or are transitioning out of foster care, women fleeing domestic violence, veterans. You get bonus points for all those things, and you're competitive when you're going against other applicants. The period starts August 15th. In December, the city council votes on it. They go through the whole thing, and it's so, so it's known. Everybody knows, here's the time period, this is when we apply, and we're going up against other, other guys, because it's, Portland's a million-dollar cap. I don't think ours should be that high, we're, we're a much smaller city. So I, I think that's quite reasonable, and really, I mean, I already explained that, you know, the 20% affordable component, I think should be a minimum threshold requirement. There are people in Portland that will be happy to help the local people here figure all that out, and how to do it, and be a successful applicant. I don't, I don't see that as a big, I don't see that as a big barrier. We really need to totally redo our, our score sheet. It's, it's silly, you get a, you need 100 points minimum. Well, project is located on site officially designated opportunity site, 100 points. I don't think you should get 100 points for building green. That's a minimum threshold requirement in Portland. And then you get 100 points if the project is in the downtown plan area. That's silly. Just for applying, you, that means you're eligible. It's, and there's no, no other, you don't even have to try to get some of these other, these points for affordable units and accessible units. It just doesn't make any sense. This whole thing has, really has to be reworked, and into something more, more coherent and more sensible.
All right. Mike Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I get a couple of calls and emails, and I read a couple of comments now and again about MPTs. I think there are a few folks in the community that have an opinion on this. And frankly, I, I really wish that of all those who comment on it, heard clearly something that Alan said a minute ago. I wish they understood that part clearly, because I'm not sure everybody does, that no city check is written, there's no actual money that goes out from the city of taxes previously collected that goes out to any developer at any time, any place, when a MPT applies. It's a discount. It's an opportunity to get savings upfront, that without the project, don't exist and don't take place in the first place, like when you buy anything else at a discount. I go to the book sale myself every year with the, the library book sale that they have at the fairgrounds, and I look forward to that every year, because I like to have a good library, and the price on books is amazingly discounted, and it's a fantastic deal. So I look forward to going to that every year. So the question, would I buy all of those books without the library sale? No. No, that wouldn't take place. That money wouldn't go anywhere, because as much as I love books, I can't afford to do that. That, that just isn't feasible in the budget. So when that opportunity comes, that economic activity will take place. So I, I wish everybody understood that there's a value beyond just those we're talking about here, and a public benefit and a public good that comes from the program, and it's not something that the city writes a check for of taxes previously collected. But beyond that, the, the thing that we should, wait a minute, I've lost my second train of thought from that, darn it. Give me a second. Yeah, no kidding. I guess I'm going to have to ask for another round while I think about that for a second. I lost my second train of thought while thinking about the first one.
Well, we'll start another train over here, Alan.
Yeah, I know. Well, usually I can keep all of that in my head along the way, but I should have written it down. You're right.
You.
I was going to come out on the point system. You know, it really works in Portland, because it's a competition with a once-a-year, once-a-year window, and then you're choosing between different applications, and the bonus points actually mean something there, because then you can distinguish between projects to pick, meet with, and within the cap that they have on an annual basis. In our system, it really doesn't mean anything, because each update decision is a one-off, standalone decision, and, and we never go back and compare them against any other project. We don't know if this one's better than this one or that one. And, and we don't make developers compete against each other from a limited pool of annual exemptions, and that, and have to bring more public benefits to the table to get in the, in the program. So I think that, that whole way of doing things that Portland does it, is actually really intriguing to me, because it makes a lot more sense. It makes the point system come alive, as long as there's minimum requirements, I agree with, as Chris said, which is, there are these minimum requirements that get you in the door. Then you compete on the Oscar bonus point stuff that gets you a higher score, as long as we're inside that annual budget of how much exemption we're going to give away. And you, and, and if you have that, you do that annual exemption, or annual amount or budget, it's not fair to say, okay, for the whole year, and if you came in in January, and you ate it all up, somebody comes in in October, gets zero, because you weren't in the door in January. That doesn't make any sense to me either. So having a window where you say, okay, this, for this one-month period or two-month period, if the applications are being accepted, actually does make a lot of sense to me.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Alan was...
The train arrived?
Yeah, it did. And, and Alan was apparently conducting the train. The, the issue is, I, I would, I would ask, I suppose as a courtesy request, for those of my colleagues interested in the idea of a cap, to help me understand the value of it a little better. I appreciate what you just said. I'm not sure I'm interested in a limited window when a project can apply, which was, would be the only way that sounds like it'd work feasibly. And absent that, if we're able to institute any percentage of what we're talking about at this table, plus what it does already as an incentive, we're talking about a program that produces a, a great deal of public good. And as the mayor points out, a great, you know, that's just kind of the minimum of the, of the best outcomes we can create. And, and so I'm wondering why we would want to cap that, if it produces and actually does effectively incentivize economic growth in our area, more increased local employment, and all of the other public benefits we're talking about. I'm, I'm wondering why would we want to limit that?
City manager?
All I was going to say, at some point, before we end, it could probably be good for us just to recap generally where we think we're headed on some of these things, knowing that there can be more discussion. So if we put some things together, we'll kind of get a little confirmation, or at least headed in the right direction. So at the right time, we'd be happy to do a little bit of that.
So what we'll do here is, I think I have one last comment from Alan, and one from George Brown, and then we'll get you to recap. And the only other comment I, I would just make is, I think this is a really important thing for us to do right. I think it affects everything we're going to be doing henceforth, and, and so I think taking the time to really get it right, I don't know if that's going to be complicated or simple, and you'll tell us that, but, but I think you want to have it done in time, but I also want you to give yourself the liberty to take more time, or even add a meeting if you need to, because I think this is, we, we get in, on, especially on really important things, we get into a time jam, and, and don't allow our, ourselves to, to maybe to think it out as far as we need to think it out. So I just, I, I feel this is so significant to the work we have ahead and the community and every, that we really do need to take the time to do it right. If that can be done by that date, or we need to add more, I think that's what we should be doing. Okay, Alan, and then George.
I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said, Mayor. I think it's important to get it right, instead of fast. But, but that's happy said that, deadlines are good. They make us do things, so if we do extend it, we would extend it to a time cert, and say, okay, we're going to do one more meeting, or two more meetings, but you're not going to just let it go on forever and ever. But the reason for the cap, Mike, I think, is because it sets a budget. That's why we have a budget document that's that thick. Almost every single thing we do has a budget. And, and you do that because it affords accountability, but it also limits liability or exposure to things, to potential ramifications to the program. And, and, and as it stands now, our budget for MPT is unlimited. It's naturally limited by the marketplace and how much goes on, but it's, there's no cap on it. And so I think having a, a budget keeps us, keeps the accountability for the program more in the forefront, making it more transparent.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak to that point just briefly. This, I asked about the cap, what that means, and Kate Allen wrote back. The cap balances concerns about the cost of the programs in terms of foregone revenue, especially of consumer bargaining, against the public benefits in stats. That's the reason for the cap. And Portland's a much bigger town. Multnomah County is a much bigger county, and they have concerns about the foregone revenue and, and the cost to administer the program. So that's, that's, that's Portland Housing Bureau's explanation. So I think that we need to, I mean, for staff to work on, we need to, I would like to see minimum threshold requirements, kind of like what we've been discussing, and I'm happy to provide a list. Actually, I would like to, I don't know that we can, that staff will be able to get everything done by, by May the 29th, which is Wednesday, I think. For us to just, like, approve it, or approve it at the next meeting, I think it may take a little while. I think that was, well...
We're still in April.
I understand, but it's, but they're going to have to bring back, my, my idea is to bring back a range of options along, you know, like one, option one, two, three, with categories of like minimum threshold requirements. What can we all agree on? What are the options there? I really, me personally, I'm going to insist on the 20% affordability component. Build green, no points. 20% affordability, no points. Apply in the zone, no points. Make competitive, I think we really ought to take a quick look at that. That provides total certainty for the developers. They know there's a season, and the season starts in the summertime, and the council approves or disapproves in December. Plenty of time for the spring and summer building season to begin. So that's good. We got to change the scorecard. Annual reporting requirements, if we're going to, and, and, you know, we have to have, think about extended use agreement and applied payment liability, like they do in Portland, even though no one's had to pay anything back to Portland Housing Bureau, that doesn't mean that it won't happen. And, and a lot of the reporting things, like the IRS returns, doesn't have to be public information. I wouldn't expect to, I wouldn't expect to be able to read a developer's IRS returns, but I think that staff should to, to see how that fits in with their return on investment, because there's other ways that you can, you get benefits, you, you get depreciations on everything you do, the building itself, and every single appliance you install. You get really great tax breaks for all that. You get really great tax breaks for all that stuff. So this is in addition to the, you know, the tax exemption. So I, I think we need to really-
Thank you, George.
-build down on the annual reporting.
Okay, Mike, last.
Yeah. I appreciate, gentlemen, very much the idea of addressing my question about the cap. I'd love to get more. The challenge I have and the reason I ask it is the very point that I brought up at the very first and, and what you mentioned with Portland. From my perspective, forgone revenue, there is no such thing as forgone revenue unless you accept the notion that the project would happen anyway. The developers who do these say there's no way that the project would occur without it. We have this argument every single time we talk about this particular incentive. Well, and, and measurements would be a way too, but I, I actually find it troubling that we're willing to say so many people are liars because they've written it down and signed it. So I, that's the reason I request, I would love for this council to be able to look in the eye of a number of people involved in this, from the developers to local contractors as well. But if they're going to say, hey, look, without that incentive, it isn't going to happen, I, I want to see them look us in the eye and say that. And I want to see my colleagues respond with some kind of discussion and dialogue that ends that circular argument once and for all. So that's why I say, please, let, as the mayor said, let's, let's have enough time to do this right. And a part of that should be a very open forum discussion so we don't have these same sorts of arguments over and over again.
All right. You're on.
If you want us to recap real briefly-
Or whatever you want to say. You bring a lot of capping here.
Well, we can, we'll do a couple, the one, one thing in addition to all the community benefits that were talked about, we also should remember is that by envision Eugene, we need to provide public investment to ensure 1,600 multifamily housing occurs in order to not expand our urban growth boundary, to meet our requirements for compact urban development. So that is an additional community benefit in addition to all these others. Do you have, just a kind of a quick recap of-
Yeah, I'll try to capture most. There seems to be strong support for local hiring. We need to do a legal review, which we'll do, and we should maybe even expand that to include minority women business schools as well. We need some response to our need for affordable housing. There's maybe some analysis that we need to do related to whether or not we can require it like Portland or maybe go into a different direction and have some kind of dedicated payment. Financial reporting, there seems to be strong support for that. It'll help us kind of truth the whole but-for debate over time. There seems to be a lot of support for a tiered system, for us to define outcomes, public benefits, and use, and, and scale the term based on public benefit outcomes and try to be as specific as possible when we define those public benefits. Seem to be support that we're on the right direction relative to kind of what Portland did as far as focusing Mupti along corridors in downtown and commercial centers. Strong support for green building standards. We need to create clearer public benefits, more certainty for developers, and also would create better understanding for the community and, and understanding what those public benefits are. Need to look at application fee increase to help us cover some of the cost of monitoring. Need to either overhaul or eliminate our existing kind of subjective scoring system and maybe go off into another approach. We need to look at capping pro, program activity, potentially whether that be some kind of annual cap or rolling cap. We can consider those options. Look at establishing some kind of ta, cap on the return with the excess return dollars, if there are any, returned back to the community and dedicated to affordable housing, emergency shelter, some other kind of critical community need. Consider project impacts to the neighborhood, that's during construction and ongoing as these units are introduced into neighborhoods. You like Portland's minimum requirements and then bonus points for additional public benefits as a way to create some competition for the tax exemptions. Seems to be some support for kind of this competitive application process that might create some additional public benefits because people are competing for the exemptions. Overall, establish a program that creates high degree of certainty relative to the public benefits that we desire, and that we need to uncover some of the facts and myths about Portland's economy versus Eugene's economy and bring some of that back. Did I miss anything?
I didn't hear anything about having a conversation with people so that we can discover from the people actually doing the work what may be unintended consequences of our regulation.
So that's uncovering the local myths as well.
All right. Thank you very much.